You're our first, uh, our first testifier today, and it's great to have you here. Thanks very much. It's an honor to have you here, and for all of us to be able to have a chance to hear what you have to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I apologize for my tardiness. I am arriving, um, after having chaired the Senate Labor Committee this afternoon. I'm the Chair of the Senate Labor Committee, which I love very much and hold dear. So I appreciate your, uh, waiting for me, and I apologize for the delay.
Uh, Mr. Chair, members, um, I, I want to thank you very much for taking the time today to hear, um, Senate File Number 1416, which is, um, popularly known as the "Prove It First" legislation. Uh, the legislation is quite simple in nature. Um, it does what the title describes it as doing. Uh, as the Chair and members may know, we have had a number of, uh, proposals come to our state in recent years. Uh, proposals for exploring and, uh, exploiting copper, nickel, other metals here in Minnesota, deposits that we have here in Minnesota. And those proposals, um, have in some cases gone forward through permitting, have been, uh, moved through our processes, um, that we have at the state. Um, and, and most recently, we had seen, uh, a process really dissolve and fall apart, um, at the Minnesota Supreme Court, uh, in regard to that Polymet project because the proposal had so many flaws. Um, I, as you know, uh, as you may know, represent the community of Duluth. I am the Senator who represents the community of Duluth. And, um, my being here, in large part, stems from much of the work that was done in my community years, in years past, um, with that initial introduction of the Polymet proposal. Um, I and a number of community members at that time asked for an evidentiary hearing on this proposal so, so that we could really have a full vetting of information, um, the pros and cons, and really understand what this could mean for our community. And that was especially important to us because we live downstream from the site of where that proposed mine would have been. Um, and as we know, this is a type of mining that has never been done in Minnesota before. Uh, we are, have a proud history and continuing into the present day legacy of iron mining and tachanite mining in our state. But we have never done this particular type of mining. And scientists in our community in Duluth and throughout the world, um, as we were connecting together, were telling us, "This is a very different type of mining. Um, this is not the type of mining that you're used to seeing on the range and that your community is used to regulating and dealing with." Um, so this is something that you really need to think about before you would move forward with it. So as I said, we were asking for more information. We asked for a contested case hearing. Unfortunately, at the state level, uh, our agencies and our elected officials never gave that to us. So we never, we were never listened to. We were never given, uh, the opportunity to have a full vetting of what that project would mean for our community and the pros and cons of it. Um, out of those efforts and the efforts of a number of organizers throughout the state, um, we have had some discussion together and we looked to one of our neighboring states, uh, Wisconsin, which had had a law on the books for a number of years that was, uh, parallel to what we bring before the committee today, which is the "Prove It First" legislation. And what this legislation does is get to that core issue of, "Please give us the information. Please give us, please show us that you could do this safely." Um, it, it asks corporations and promoters of projects that are coming before us, before they would be allowed to be permitted, to prove to us first that they could do this safely. Um, and it really goes also to the heart of, uh, one of the core issues around this type of mining, which is that it has never been done safely in an environment, um, anywhere without polluting waterways of the environment that, that mining was done in. And that is true in, in environments where, those environments were not as water-rich as ours are. So the proposed mines, uh, that have been brought forth here in the state of Minnesota are proposed to be set up in very water-rich environments. As we know, uh, as proud Minnesotans, we have, uh, marshy areas, watery areas, especially up north central, in the areas where these deposits are, that are water. I mean, they are just water. They are more water than land. And, um, to open one of these types of mines in those areas is particularly acutely dangerous, not just to the water and not just to the environment of the area where the mine would be operating or where the, um, deposits would be processed or stored, but also then to the, all of the surrounding area and the communities that were around that area, who depend every day on that water and the health of the environment, for our economies, for pride in our way of life and who we are. Uh, these, our waters in Minnesota truly define who we are. Um, so, so, Mr. Chair and members, we bring this legislation before you, the "Prove It First" legislation, um, as a baseline approach that would protect all of the waters of our state. Um, it isn't specific to our Boundary Waters watershed, uh, that runs up to the Rainy River. It would apply to all watersheds. And I would just say specifically, um, as a nod to how important, uh, this piece of legislation is and our place here in the North American continents. You know, if you look at a map of North America, you see smack dab in the middle of North America, here we are. Here we are, in northern Minnesota. We have the conjunction of three major watersheds of the continent. We have the Rainy River watershed going north, flowing north to Hudson Bay. We have the Lake Superior watershed flowing east out to the Atlantic Ocean. And then, of course, we have the Great Mississippi watershed. We are at the center of water in the continent. And we hold a special run responsibility here to protect all of those watersheds. So the "Prove It First" legislation sets forth that here in the state of Minnesota, we are simply asking this industry to prove that they could do this safely before we would consider permitting their projects in such a water-rich environment with so much at stake, with truly everything at stake for our state. Um, and I also bring this legislation to you, and perhaps we'll hear more in the other testifiers today about this issue, but, um, in light of some of the failures that we have seen in our agencies, um, in our permitting processes. In Duluth, I recall repeatedly, we were told to "Follow the process. Follow the process." They told us, "Follow the process. Just follow the process, that it'll be okay." And we heard proponents of the project saying, "Well, I, I think we'll just follow the process." Well, the process was followed. Uh, we were never given an evidentiary hearing, as I said. And then after that went through the courts, luckily, um, from the Minnesota Supreme Court, um, in a unanimous decision, uh, by the way, authored by a conservative member of our Minnesota Supreme Court, that project was rejected on its merits. Um, the permitting is not adequate and did not cover all of the things that it should have to protect our communities and our water. Uh, we had to have whistleblowers from the federal EPA try to, try to sound the alarm on how the process was done. So we have a lot of questions about our process, the integrity of our processes in our agencies also at this time, which makes this particular legislation, the "Prove It First" legislation, even more important today. Um, so with that, Mr. Chair and members, I will go ahead and, um, move aside. Uh, we have some excellent testifiers here in support of our legislation today, and I will stand for questions, uh, if and when the committee is ready to hear them. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator McKeown. Now with us, we have Chris Knopf with the Executive Director of Friends of the Boundary Waters Wilderness. Thank you for being here today. We look forward to your testimony.
Good afternoon. I'm Chris Knopf, the Executive Director of Friends of the Boundary Waters Wilderness. As a child, I learned the vital importance of clean water. I grew up in Cleveland, Ohio, at a time when Cleveland became famous around the world for its water. My hometown was a city where the river caught fire. Cleveland's economic decline coincided with this environmental calamity. Would you want to live in a place that was so dirty that its river literally burned? I have raised my family in Minnesota. My children have grown up in the land of sky-blue water. Clean water is our identity in Minnesota. Clean water is who we are. Clean water makes Minnesota a great place to live. Our lives in Minnesota revolve around clean water. This is where we teach our grandchildren to swim, catch fish with friends, and cement those friendships and bonds that make life meaningful. Clean water is Minnesota's most important natural resource. There are more than 1,200 lakes in the Boundary Waters and 11,842 lakes throughout all of Minnesota. We have the greatest of the Great Lakes, Lake Superior, that is home to 10% of the world's fresh water. We are the headwaters of the Mississippi River. For decades, our clean water has been under threat from sulfide ore mining, the most polluting industry in the United States. Sulfide mining is different from Minnesota's traditional iron mining. Sulfide mining has never been done in Minnesota. Sulfide mining produces sulfuric acid, battery acid, when the mined rock is exposed to water. Right now, there are three proposed sulfide mines that threaten Minnesota's clean water. Twin Metals, owned by Anafagasta, threatens the Boundary Waters. Polymet, owned by Glencore, threatens Lake Superior. And Talon, owned by Rio Tinto, threatens the headwaters of the Mississippi River. In the controversy over sulfide mining, two things are abundantly clear. First, Minnesota simply does not have the laws to protect our clean water from this dangerous industry. Second, as our victories in the courtroom have shown, Minnesota's regulators are unwilling to properly enforce the laws that are already on the books. We're here today not to demand extreme legislation, but to ask the Minnesota Legislature to take common sense measures to protect what makes Minnesota a great home to 5 million people: our clean water. We ask the Minnesota Legislature to pass "Prove It First." Prove It First is simple. Prove It First requires sulfide mining companies to first prove there is one example where this type of mining, mining has been done elsewhere in the United States without polluting before we do it here in Minnesota. No proof, no mine. The simplest questions are often the most profound. That is the case here. If they can't point to one example where sulfide mining has been done safely, then why would we do it here in Minnesota? We're on this earth for just a short time. We borrow it from future generations. Clean water is our heritage in Minnesota. We are blessed with clean water. The generation that came before me gave me a river in my hometown that caught on fire. That was my heritage as a child. If we poison our clean water in Minnesota with sulfide mining, we will not be able to look future generations in the eye. We will have defiled our heritage and broken that sacred trust and bond with future generations. I ask the Minnesota Legislature to protect our clean water. I ask the Minnesota Legislature to pass "Prove It First." Thank you.
Chris, thanks very much. It's a pleasure for me to, uh, introduce our next speaker, Commissioner Kelly Applegate. Commissioner Applegate is here from the M'Lax Band of Ojibwe, and, um, his, um, presentation will be, uh, I think, enlightening, and, um, it was, when I read it, inspiring. Commissioner?
Yes, good afternoon. Amin. Ujul. Miss Kawaskin, N'dijnekaz, Magizi, and Dodem. Mrs. Agiagun, Indunjabah. My name is Kelly Applegate, and I'm the Commissioner of Natural Resources with the M'Lax Band of Ojibwe. I'm also a tribal member of the M'Lax Band. Prove It First requirement that mining, that mining organizations prove that they can operate without damaging the environment is an issue of great importance to the M'Lax Band of Ojibwe. The Minnesota Department of Natural Resources is currently reviewing a proposal for a nickel-sulfide mine in Tamarack, Minnesota, located just 1.3 miles from the homes of our tribal members and our precious cultural resources, like the sites where we harvest our manuman, also known as wild rice, medicinal plants, fish, game, maple sap, and birch bark. And it's for this reason why the M'Lax Band is disappointed that there have been political decisions to halt the legislative hearing on sulfide mining. Nickel-sulfide mines have a long history of damaging the surrounding land and watersheds and leave a legacy of contamination long after they've been closed and abandoned. There's no evidence that these mines can operate safely. In a water-rich environment like Minnesota, impacts to the health of our watersheds ripples out across the environment. Our pristine wetlands recharge our drinking water for our communities. Our interconnected wetlands carry water across the landscape and link to rivers, streams, lakes, and groundwater flows. Critical drinking water sources and aquatic habitats throughout the Mississippi and St. Croix watersheds could be impacted by the pollution associated with nickel-sulfide mining. And the size of the proposed Tamarack mine continues to expand, which would put even more resources at risk. Without proof that pollution-free operations are possible, sulfide mining in Minnesota's pristine ecosystem is a high-stakes experiment that we're not willing to be part of. Certain mining projects, like the proposed Tamarack mine, are advanced in the name of green energy, justifying their need to support electric vehicle battery production. We believe the pursuit of clean energy technology and solutions to the climate crisis are crucial, but not at the expense of indigenous people, the broader Minnesota population, our environment, and our water. Minnesota and the nation haven't fully explored other options to meet nickel demand, like recycling nickel and metal waste, and we caution against a false sense of urgency to approve mining plans without proper due diligence and proof that they will not pollute. It was in this spirit that the M'Lax Band launched Water Over Nickel, an initiative led by the M'Lax Band of Ojibwe and allied organizations and experts dedicated to protect, protecting Minnesota's water, environment, and communities from the risks associated with nickel-sulfide mining. Our efforts are grounded in our commitment to preserve Minnesota's natural environment and water resources for generations to come. There is an Inishanabi teaching that our people have. We are to care for our earth and those yet unborn and the next seven generations to come. If we make good decisions, we can protect the earth and water and know that the next seven generations can have a good life. With that, I thank you, Migwich.
Migwich, Commissioner Applegate. Now up is Mike Moleska, an iron ore miner for 42 years and a local union president. He is retired. Welcome to the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members. Uh, my name is Mike Moleska. Uh, lifelong resident of rural Hibbing area. I worked as an iron ore miner in one of the tachanite mines, um, as a laborer, an electrician, and a union steward, even, uh, served a term as local union president. Um, before Minnesotans and our legislators lurch forward here, um, permitting this type of mining that has never been done in Minnesota before, never been attempted here, um, there are few things we should take into consideration. Let's say, for instance, that these companies and international corporations that want to, uh, go forward in this venture are in it for profit. They are in it for profit. Let's say, for instance, they make claims to the effect that with modern technology, pollution is a thing of the past. We can mine without polluting anything. I hear it all the time, and I'm sure you do as well. Then let's say, for instance, citizens come to believe that those claims, and worse yet, our reg, our legislators come to believe that as well, and these mines are permitted. Then let's say, for instance, somebody notices a fish kill, or, uh, a nasty smell, or dust in the air all the time, and the kids are coughing, or, uh, new fish regulatory advisories, uh, things like that. We found ourselves in an environment where we permitted these mines, the most polluting industry in the most pristine part of the most pristine state in the USA. May I repeat that? The most pristine part of the most pristine state in the USA, accommodating this type of mining. At that point, who has the, what, what agency or individual has the, a power or the will to close that mine? As my experience as a miner tells me, environmental issues never close a mine. Economic issues close mines. The place I worked had a chronic dust problem for decades. And when the Health Department came to the company and says, "When you're running those crushers, you gotta get the people out of there. It's too hazardous." Company said, "How about if we make them wear dust masks?" The agency said, "Fine, but they've gotta be test, fit-tested so that they actually work." Next thing you know, every mechanic or an operator that was working in that part of the plant had to shave their beards and, and wear these masks. I have a bit of a problem with that. We, rather than cure the problem, fix the, fix the dust issue, we modify the humans. My, I, I, I ask this: how much accommodation do our lakes and streams, our communities, and, um, and our waters and air have to take, have to accommodate in order to, to survive this type of mining? I don't want an answer to that question. What I want to see is the courage from some of our legislators to stand up to these mining companies and, and make them do one simple thing: prove they won't pollute. Prove it first. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Moleska. Our next speaker is Doug Watt. Doug, uh, comes to us today from British Columbia, and, um, his story is one of, uh, life and death. And, um, I'm eager to hear you, um, present to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello. My name is Doug Watt. I'm a resident of Likely, British Columbia, Canada, situated on the side of Quinell Lake. Uh, I was a former worker at the Mount Polley Mine. I worked as a mill shift supervisor and a metallurgist. Uh, the Mount Polley Mine is a copper-sulfide mine, uh, much like Polymet, and it stored its tailings in a wet tailing storage facility dam design. I have also been a former environmental superintendent at Tunston Mine. Quinell Lake is a very, was a very pristine lake. It was deep, long, uh, clear water, up to 2,000 feet deep in places, had trophy trout, uh, clear water. We used to eat the fish and we drank the water directly out of the lake. On August the 4th, 2014, early in the morning, I got a phone call, woke me up. The dam had breached. "Don't drink the water. Take your boat out of the lake. Get ready to evacuate." Nobody knew what was happening. I go outside, and there's a big roar in the distance. Hazeltine Creek was about, uh, seven, six, seven miles from my house, and I could hear it roaring down into the lake. Um, that water poured for weeks down there, and it took the company two weeks to, to get it down to a trickle. So in that initial deposition of, from the breach, it was 6 billion gallons of tailings, uh, material from the dam, washout from the creek, uh, trees. There were big rafts of, uh, trees floating around in the lake. Over the next 10, uh, next two years, as the, uh, mine got things under control and they rebuilt the dam and stuff, another 10 billion gallons of dirty water flowed into the lake. When the mine got the permit, funny to go back into operation, they got a permit that now allows them to dump 2.6 billion gallons annually of their basically untreated mine effluent into Quinell Lake. How did this happen? We were misled. During the permitting process in the 1990s, the residents demanded that no effluent discharge was ever to occur into the pristine Quinell Lake environment. The mine promised a zero discharge operation that is a negative water balance. The, uh... The regulators accepted that when they went through the permitting process that that was going to happen. And they also told us that, that the mine would, would not be polluting the environment. During all these processes, we were assured by the mining company that they would be using modern, best-available technology. And the regulators accepted that, like, over our concerns. And what we have found is that the reality is that the mining company will use the cheapest available technology that they can get away with. Prior to, or just as the, uh, as this was all going down and we were starting to catch up on, on what's happening, um, we residents noticed that, going through reports, that the local lake right beside Mount Polley, Polley Lake, had been polluted, been getting polluted for a number of years from, uh, nutrients and metals from the, from their waste rock dumps. And the regulators never noticed. So they never did anything about that until we pointed out to them that it was occurring. Afterwards, the premier of our province, uh, sat, stood on the banks of the Quinell River downtown Likely and assured us that the, uh, mine operations, mine operation would be held responsible for ensuring that the, uh, that the, uh, lake was returned back to pristine condition it was before the, uh, breach, and that those responsible in the company and elsewhere would be, uh, held accountable for, for the, the breach. The only promise that was kept was that the mine operations resumed, and the company was now allowed to discharge their effluent into Quinell Lake. Nobody was ever held responsible. Zero charges or penalties were issued to anybody. It's been almost 10 years now. Not a single dollar penalty, jail, nothing. I no longer consume fish or water from Quinell Lake. We actually haul our water from the nearest town, which is, uh, about 60 miles away, for drinking water and cooking. The water quality has significantly degraded in the lake. Um, it's now cloudy. Algae grows where it never grew before, and the rocks are slimy with what we call "rocksnot." Bensick organizations have been proven in, uh, tests done by the University of Northern B.C., and these, of course, are totally independent, peer-reviewed studies, that these microorganisms in the lake are starting to pick up with, pick up copper and other metals in, you know, from the, uh, from the tailings which are in the lake and the continued discharge of their water. You have to understand that the water treatment that was approved by the regulators in this case was to put the water in diffusers 50 meters under the surface, and then there's a hundred radius, 100-meter radius around that diffuser where the company has to go around and try to find the plume. And they, they, then they sample the water at that point. So they put the water in the lake, dilute it, then it meets the B.C. water quality guidelines. Most of us trusted the regulators and the mining company, but of course, we've lost trust in the regulators and the mining companies. We believed that when they said it could be done safely, and now we're living with the consequences. What happened at Quinell Lake with a wet tail storage facility failure is also happening all over the world. And it could happen hu, to you here in Minnesota as well. Be cautious, be careful. Thank you.
With us next, we have Dr. Stephen Emmerman. He's an internationally recognized mining expert, owner of Malak Consulting. Welcome to the com- Welcome to the committee, Dr. Emmerman.
Thank you. I am Dr. Stephen Emmerman. I was a professor of geology for over 30 years. I have studied and worked on issues of water and mining for over 40 years. That's my entire professional career. I will say three things. One, sulfide ore mining poses a threat to clean water. Two, the sulfide ore mining industry has a perfect track record of water pollution. And three, the threat to clean water lasts forever. Sulfide ores are ore bodies in which the commodity of value, such as copper or nickel, is found in the form of a sulfide mineral. Examples of sulfide minerals are calcophyrite, which is a copper sulfide, or pentlandite, which is a nickel sulfide. When these sulfide minerals are excavated, crushed, and exposed at the surface to oxygen and water, the sulfide minerals convert to sulfuric acid with release of the heavy metals into the dissolved form. This reaction is especially problematic for the tailings, that is, the wet and crushed rock particles that remain after the copper or nickel has been extracted, which is more than 99% of the ore body. When this mixture of sulfuric acids and heavy metals leaks into surface water or groundwater, it is called acid mine drainage. The copper and nickel mines proposed by Polymet, Twin Metals, and Talon Metals would all be sulfide ore mines. The existing iron ore mines in Minnesota are not sulfide ore mines. The sulfide mining industry has a perfect track record of water pollution. I'll say that one more time. A perfect track record of pollution. During the moratorium on sulfide ore mining in Wisconsin from 1997 to 2017, 10 mines were put forward as examples of sulfide ore mines that had not caused water pollution. All of these examples were discredited because in fact, all 10 mines really did have extensive records of water pollution. Now these same 10 mines are being recycled as examples of sulfide ore mines without records of water pollution, even though they have already been discredited, which is the best proof of all that there are no examples. I encourage you to read my report on this subject entitled, "The Minnesota Prove It First Bill and the Myth of Sulfide Ore Mining Without Environmental Contamination." I will address one of the 10 mines, one of the fake success stories. The Flambeau Mine in Wisconsin was operated by Rio Tinto only from 1993 to 1997. But even to this day, Stream C, which crosses the mine site before entering the Flambeau River, has a copper concentration so high that the stream is nearly devoid of life, and the stream has been placed on the EPA list of impaired waters. The certificate of completion of reclamation that Rio Tinto received in December 2022 stated only that the mining company had fulfilled its reclamation plan. It in no way stated that the reclamation plan had been successful in avoiding water pollution. The notion that this type of mining, sulfide ore mining, has ever been carried out without polluting the surrounding water system is simply a myth. The threat to clean water lasts forever. The tailings will be permanently stored on the surface so that there will be a permanent threat of leakage of sulfuric acid and heavy metals into surface water and groundwater. And there'll be a permanent threat of the catastrophic collapse of the tailings disposal facility. Is this the type of curse? And I chose that word very deliberately. I did not say legacy, I said curse. Is this the type of curse that we want to give to future generations in Minnesota? Thank you.
Grew up with the idea that Minnesota would leave a legacy of, um, freshwater and, um, a brilliant example of, um, wilderness to, uh, our children and those who come after, certainly not a curse. Thanks very much for your compelling testimony.
Okay, thank you.
Bruce Johnson and Fred Campbell are retired state regulators from the MPCA, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, and the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. I'm eager to hear their testimony. Mrs. Johnson and Campbell, would you introduce yourselves and we'll go on from there. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Bruce Johnson. I'm a retired environmental scientist. I worked in the regional copper nickel study in the 70s. I later worked for DNR at the AMEX Mine, where we studied both waste rock and tech, and, pardon me, tailing from sulfide mining. I then worked with Minnesota Pollution Control Agency in water quality permit enforcement.
Thank you. I'm Fred Campbell, a retired hydrologist. Uh, prior to my 29 years at the MPCA, I worked for the DNR on the regional copper nickel study. And I also worked for AMEX at their copper nickel sulfide deposit, which is currently leased by Tech and is part of the joint venture with Polymet, known as New Range Copper. Uh, today, though, we wanna talk about the unwillingness of state agencies to control pollution from a taconite mine that removed and stockpiled rocks from the overlying Duluth complex. The same rocks that New Range and Twin Metals want to mine for copper nickel sulfides.
In 30 years at the Dunka Mine, they took out 47 million tons of sulfide-bearing waste rock. This waste rock contains numerous toxic, toxic metals. The metals drained into unnamed creek of, then drained into Bob Bay of Birch Lake. They've, all the discharges from these wast- waste rock areas violated numerous water quality standards. The mining company was finally made to put in inactive treatment system to treat the wastewater. It treated most of the wastewater, but they needed variances to treat parts of the wastewater. It was determined at a later date that it was too costly to operate. So DNR came back and they decide, designed a passive wastewater treatment system through wetlands. However, those wetland treatment systems could not meet the regulatory standards. And in their own report, they suggested that we need regulatory relief to meet standards. The PCA then issued a permit, which I would call illegal because the permit didn't even follow their own regulations. They then came, the PCA then came out and stated that the mine was in full compliance with their permit. Now, we have to understand that we're talking about full copper nickel mining of numerous mines. Polymet alone would produce five times the amount of waste rock that we have at Dunka.
Now, exploration data from numerous companies, including Tech, uh, Polymet, and Twin Metals clearly show that the variable thickness and sulfide content of these rocks and deposits will make it difficult to segregate the potential ore from the associated waste rock. These waste rocks and tailings contain toxic chemicals, including but not limited to metals such as nickel, arsenic, and they also contain asbestos-form minerals such as serpentine, and they also contain chlorides. All of these chemicals are proven to cause negative impacts to the environment and human health if they are released. Now, available geologic data strongly suggests that other currently unidentified toxic chemicals are also released from Duluth complex sulfide rock.
In 47 years, 47 years, MPCA and DNR have not yet controlled the pollution at the Dunka Mine. How can these regulators possibly protect waters from multiple full-scale sulfide mines? Minnesota's existing legal and regulatory framework cannot protect us from the dangers of toxic sulfide mining. To adequately protect human health and the environment, Minnesota needs to adopt the proposed, the proposed Prove It First Bill is legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson and Mr. Campbell for your testimony. With us now is Jerry Nelson. Jerry Nelson is a clean water advocate for 50 years. Welcome to the committee.
Good afternoon. I'm Jerry Nelson, a lifelong advocate for clean water and wilderness. Almost every summer growing up, my family vacationed on Basswood Lake in the heart of the, of the Boundary Waters. We fished, ate a shore lunch of walleye or northern, picked blueberries, and enjoyed a, a nice, um, swim in a pristine sand beach. When my husband Darby and I got married, one of several honeymoon trips that we took that summer was a trip in the Boundary Waters through a bunch of small lakes in the Lake 1, 2, 3 area. I think that trip that we did spent more time portaging than we did on the water. Many trips later, first with our children and then with our grandchildren, our spirits were renewed by our time on the water. One expedition, early in our marriage, we forgot our cook kit in the car. And we ended up cooking out of cans in a rusty pie plate that we found at an abandoned cabin along the way. After two weeks of the simple living, we realized that how superfluous all our stuff had homeless. Two sets of dishes, two sets of silverware, all kinds of pots and pans. We were so at peace, happy, one with the universe on that trip. And it really changed our attitude toward our life for the rest of our time together. This experience, um, the, these kinds of life-changing experiences happen often in wilderness. We have to protect it. All Minnesotans value clean water. But Darby went beyond that to advocate for it. He was the first treasure of the Friends of the Boundary Waters. He testified at a US Senate hearing in 1978 for wilderness status for the Boundary Waters. He, um, taught environmental science at the NOKA Ramsay for 25 years. And he sponsored much environmental legislation in the State House in the 80s. Um, and a signature piece of legislation was the Soil and Water Conservation District Act that came about because he brought together multiple stakeholders, uh, for water, water issues, um, in his office. And they came to, to a consensus on what we could, how we could better manage and protect our waters in Minnesota. Then, uh, he worked very hard to help, uh, pass the, um, Clean Water Land and Legacy Amendment, and then served on the First Lassard Sands Outdoor Heritage Council. And finally, after his diagnosis with mild cognitive impairment in 2012, he, uh, we did 100, 150 events with his first book, For Love of Lakes. And he wrote his second book, For Love of a River, The Minnesota. Our lives centered on water advocacy. There's a long tradition in Minnesota of protecting, working together to protect our water. I'm proud to be part of that legacy. And I am here today to urge the Minnesota Legislature to pass, um, and to continue, to continue that legacy and pass this common sense legislation. Prove it first before you come and pollute our pristine water in Minnesota. Thank you.
Simony, last night, the first paragraph really struck home. When you talked about picking blueberries, my first trip to the Boundary Waters was in 1954. And I remember getting off our little orange bus and looking out at Moose Lake and imagining that I hadn't seen water that blue ever. A couple of days later, while we were, uh, looking for a campsite, we came across a little island and pulled our canoes up and walked top, uh, the island and, uh, the ground was blue. Blue with blueberries. We picked those blueberries for half an hour or so, put them aside. We had blueberry pancakes for the rest of the trip. And of course, it stayed in my memory and so your comments were especially poignant to me. Thanks very much and, uh, for your memories and for your dedication. Our next, uh, speaker is Claire Peterson. And Claire, it's just great to see you here today. Young voices are so important. Those of us who are, have been around for a while will, uh, leave this world with, we hope, a legacy of freshness and beauty. And you're the kind of person that we want to leave it to. Uh, looking forward to hearing from you.
Thank you, yes. Hello. My name is Claire Peterson. I am 17 years old, a senior in high school, and currently attend the University of Minnesota Twin Cities. Over the past two years, I've been a high school intern at the Minnesota Valley National Wildlife Refuge. And over the past summer, I was a youth environmental justice advocate for climate generation, where I helped plan a conservation conference for youth around the Twin Cities. When I was younger, I would go hiking with my dad to Duluth Long Island Shore, the River Interstate State Park, or the bank of the Mississippi River bottoms. These experiences and more have allowed me to realize my passion for the outdoors. Someday, I hope to become an environmental engineer, where I'll work to protect what little natural spaces we have left and bridge the gap between the built and natural worlds. Last summer, for the very first time in my 17 years of existence, I was able to visit the Boundary Waters. It might be confusing as to why someone who hasn't even graduated high school has no experience in political activism and has been to the Boundary Waters once is here to speak to you today. Despite all this, I know without a doubt that the Boundary Waters is a special place. It can connect people to each other in the world around them in a way that no other place can. While I was in the Boundary Waters, I got to see garter snakes and eagles, beavers and minks, snapping turtles and loons. I even got to hug a thousand-year-old cedar tree. Of course, I had to haul around 30-pound bags and canoes on my shoulders for four days through the wilderness. And my crew and I had to look at it. 5:00 AM, every morning, to get an early start, I'm paddling. We had to work together to support and motivate each other through long portages. It was hard, but through it all, I got to connect with my peers. It was a beautiful and wonderful experience. I'm deeply privileged to have shared with my friends. I know I will cherish the memories I made in the Boundary Waters for the rest of my life. My hope for the future is that young people like myself can, can continue to discover the unspoiled beauty of the Boundary Waters year after year. The decision to pass Prove It First will not only affect the next 20 years, it will affect the next 70 years. I, for one, would much rather spend the rest of my life planning Boundary Waters trips with my family rather than cleansing it of sulfide sludge. So, I urge you to act. The Boundary Waters is a sanctuary that needs to be protected for the future. The Boundary Waters is a sanctuary that needs to be protected for the future, just as the people need the Boundary Waters. The Boundary Waters needs us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. And now Senator Jen McEwen, I turn it back to you for your closing remarks. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I would say that, of course, we know that today we are here with advocates for this legislation in particular to come together to experience something akin to what we might be able to have if we are granted an informational hearing, for example, or a true hearing by the legislature. I would note that there has never been a hearing about this bill or this issue in the last decade, at the very least, ever since my community has been dealing with these new proposals. I consider that a form of legislative malpractice, frankly. We have a legislature whose duty it should be to, at the very least, vet these types of proposals, which, as we've heard from the excellent expert testimony today in support of this bill, pose real concerns, dire concerns, for the people of our state, for our waters, for our economy, for our communities, and that our, that our elected officials have not taken steps to actually vet this and have helped, in essence, by inaction, the industry to push these projects along, sort of under the radar as quickly as possible so that the people don't have a chance to really take in the inevitable consequences of this type of industry moving into our state is, is very worrisome to me. So as we move forward, I just want to thank the members of this committee, and I'd like to thank my dozens of co-authors of this legislation as well, both in the Minnesota Senate and the Minnesota House. I'd like to thank the members of the Democratic Farmer Labor Party, who have organized repeatedly year after year to pass Prove-It-First resolutions within our party structure, regularly getting at least over 50% of the vote in our conventions, just short of adopting it as a resolution sometimes because it requires a 60% threshold, but we're always over 50% recently, and this is clearly something that again and again, the people of our state have told us, we want this information, and we are very nervous about this type of industry coming to our state. We definitely don't want to see these mines set up in the Boundary Waters, and we're also leery about any of these mines setting up and the dangers that they pose to our waters and our economy and our people. So, along with many other issues that we see in our public life, unfortunately, whether it be healthcare or weapons of war out in our community, the public is often ahead of where the legislature is, unfortunately. The public is ready for things, public is ready for healthcare for all, public is ready for common sense, gun safety measures, and because of corporate interference, because of power and misbalances of power, you don't see legislators acting on behalf of the people. You see them, unfortunately, acting at the behest of the powerful. And so I hope, as we move forward, I am hopeful that this informational people's hearing that we have held today can be a catalyst for the legislature to hold an informational hearing, at the very least, for the people of this state to vet these ideas, and where we can hear testimony from people who want to see these developments and those who don't, and their reasons why, and, and perhaps also move toward passing this legislation to truly protect the people of our state. Thank you very much.
Senator McEwen, and those of you here are here from Friends of the Boundary Waters. Thanks very much. It's a real pleasure for me, and I'm sure for Connie as well, to be part of this. Senator McEwen, I'm not sure you grew up reading Jack Kennedy's book, Profiles in Courage. It was an inspiration, I think, for a lot of us who read that book, and there, there's room in that book for new chapters, and you, Senator Morrison, who was here earlier, and all of those around the room, and other legislators who speak up, belong in that book as well. Courage to support and speak out for a piece of legislation which is so important against the issues that, and interests that, that might be an obstacle, is an important task for all of us, so thank you very much. Representative Bernardi was the chair of the Higher Education Committee the last time I was in the legislature, so she was my chair, and, and so I, I needed to refer to her and ask her to make the last words of this wonderful meeting. Connie?
Well, thank you very much. It was an honor to chair this committee with you, Representative, Representative, and Senator McEwen, thank you for being the chief author, and Representative Hanson, Jess Hanson in the Minnesota House, for being a chief author too, and everyone who has signed on to you. These discussions happen in our community all the time, and I'm looking forward to these discussions being able to happen here in the people's place, and so I thank you for bringing those places and having all the people here to hear these, to hear these stories and expert testimony and important information. Minnesota expects these difficult conversations and expects us to have them, so thank you very much for, for being here today. And with that, our committee is, our, our public hearing is adjourned.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Really nice job.